We have a roll call, please. Councilmember Coffee?
Present.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Sharky?
Here.
Councilmember Dowd?
Here.
Councilmember Durbin?
Here.
Would you all please welcome and congratulate Mitch Sashar, our new water superintendent? Taking his first appearance as a department head this evening.
Is he gonna say a few words?
Well, he told me he only had a speech that lasted thirty minutes, so I'm gonna cut him off right now.
Okay.
Unless he would like to say something, Mitch, if you would.
Thank you. Very extreme on Eagles shirt.
Yeah, I see that. A couple of dates I'd like the council to keep in mind, we have some live fire burns for our fire class going on. May sixth, May thirteenth, May fourteenth, and one of those dates, if you can get down to the training facility down where the containers are, uh, one to three, they'll be doing live burning with the kids down there or the students down there. I was down there today, don't wear anything that you wanna wear again because you will end up smelling like smoke. Unfortunately, I got a brand new sport coat now that I'm gonna be able to wear again. Uh, May sixteenth is the graduation class, I'd sure love to have the council people attend that graduation ceremony, one to three, if you're down at the fire barn. And this, this, this is Wednesday, Wednesday, is it this Wednesday? Yeah, the lunch and employee luncheon is this Wednesday, down to Commons Hall, eleven to one. Food truck will be down there, I think the chief has had some stuff coming in from Dairy Queen and come down and enjoy a nice lunch with all the ladies.
Is there any best time for us to be there?
No, anytime eleven to one, yeah, they usually, they usually start fairly early and kinda get in and out pretty quick, so if you're down at eleven, eleven thirty, you ought to be in good shape.
I know, that's why I have to ask. I don't have much of a schedule.
Uh, request approval of the April twenty-first minutes, please. Don't move. The seconded discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, unfinished business, orders number seventeen seventy-three, twenty twenty-five, and ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Angola, Indiana. This is west of the South Golden Lake Road for the second reading.
Move.
Second.
Motion seconded discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ordinance amending the Angola Municipal Code Title thirteen, Public Services Chapter thirteen point one five, Stormwater Management, second reading.
Second.
Motion seconded discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ordinance number seventeen seventy-five, twenty twenty-five, initial appropriation for the ordinance, uh, of the city of Angola, Indiana, the Redevelopment General Fund for second reading. Motion seconded discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, any other unfinished business?
Mr. D, do you have an update on the state?
Okanagan project?
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna have this on the new business hearing just a second for the bonds, that's gonna be coming up, and the project itself has been put out for build, operate, transfer, uh, contract. They interviewed all the contractors and everything, said they did have a lot of interest this time, and the selection process is working through that part of it, and, uh, hopefully we'll be moving forward with that real soon. Any other unfinished business? New business, and this is, was it Yogi Bear's deja vu all over again? Uh, this is the bond ordinance basically that we had done before, we're gonna start all over on first reading. We've had two of the three, but it's been too long, so we're gonna start all over again, and this ordinance is to cover those projects. Uh, ordinance number seventeen seventy-six, wow, seventeen seventy-six, twenty twenty-five, and ordinance of the city of Angola authorizing issuance of Water Works Revenue Bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of certain additions, extensions, and improvements to the municipal waterworks of said city. The issuance of the revenue bonds to provide for the cost thereof, the collection, segregation, and distribution of the revenues of said works, providing for the safeguarding of the interests of the owners of said bonds. All matters connected, uh, herein, including the issuance of notes and anticipation of bonds and repealing ordinance inconsistent herein or herewith. First reading.
Move.
Second.
And motion seconded discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. And same thing for wastewater, ordinance number seventeen seventy-seven, twenty twenty-five, and ordinance for the city of Angola authorizing issuance of sewage works revenue bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay for the cost of certain additions, extensions, and improvements to the sewage works of said city. The issuance of the revenue bonds to provide for the cost thereof, the collection, segregation, distribution of the revenue of said works, providing for the safeguarding of the interests of the owners of said bonds, all other matters connected herewith, including, including the issuance of notes and anticipation of bonds and repealing ordinance inconsistent herewith. First reading.
Move.
Second.
Motion seconded discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. We will now open a public hearing regarding the proposed vacation of Thunder Drive, ordinance number seventeen seventy-eight, twenty twenty-five.
Swear.
Yes.
I do see a typo here, I don't wanna be Mr. Coffee.
I just don't assign.
Nobody wants to be Mr. Coffee.
I will have that corrected on the agenda and the, and the actual ordinance for the, just like twenty second.
You, you don't like Thunder Drive?
The Thunder.
We're gonna, we're gonna change the name?
Thunder, Thunder?
No, I, I spend so much time reading each other's.
Bonds, I read the bonds.
Which we will open the public hearing, Jordan, I think you would like to address the same name.
I would, thank you.
Please take the podium and announce your name and address and we'll let her rip.
Perfect, my name is Jordan Hutton-Lucker, I'm with the Rothberg Law Firm, our address is five oh five East Washington Boulevard, Fort Wayne, four six eight oh two. I'm here on behalf of Trine University tonight. I know you're all familiar with Trine, um, they are now, um, in accordance with a memorandum of understanding that was entered into back in twenty sixteen. They are vacating another portion of Thunder Drive from the railroad west. I don't know where it ends, I think it ends about a thousand feet, it's approximately two acres. Um, there has been an easement agreement that has been negotiated with the city. Um, I believe Amanda has been involved in that with us, and, um, it allows for the city to come on to do sewer work and water, and I think that's it, and then we also have the ability for private utilities to access that roadway, um, as well, or vacated roadway, and the purpose of this is just for continuity purposes, safety, and I guess overall, um, the preservation of the campus as it continues to grow. So, with that, I'll answer any questions, I believe we tendered the post ordinance and the easement agreement. Um, I, you all have had an opportunity to review it. Happy to answer questions.
Anybody have any questions of Jordan? I'm, I'm not understanding where this is, I was, I know where Thunder Drive is, but I'm not understanding for the vacation.
The vacation is on the very west end of Thunder Drive, and it's gonna go, um, I believe just past the railroad tracks, if you, you can't hardly read that, but it says like,
So from Summit Street to the railroad?
Yes.
A little bit farther, farther west of Summit.
The end by the, by, yeah.
Yeah, the parking lot is.
Yeah, it's the parking lot. All the way, yes.
Basically, all of the west end of Thunder past the railroad tracks all the way to where it runs into Trine property now.
Okay.
An easement for first responders is also on that.
Correct.
Who is?
It's, yeah. That's technically allowed anyway, but we have it clarified in there too as well.
Easement, said something about notifying them if we're gonna use first responders down there. Let, let the lights of sirens be your first notice.
It's for not emergency notice that.
That is fine.
That we were, just a heads up in case there's an event going on, that we're gonna do some, some utility services, just so we can coordinate it, and Trine's fully on board to, to work together.
If, if fire trucks headed there, trust me, they.
You don't wanna be there.
Yeah, you, you'll know they're coming.
Right. So, so as far as the maintenance on the roadway, sidewalks, curbs, no removal, that will all be Trine after this?
Okay, yes.
And that affects speeding and stop restrictions?
Private property, it will be private property. The easement that we have.
And we don't have any contracts with any entity within the city of Angola that allows us on their property to enforce state law, and Trine is one of them, so.
What did you say?
Private property, like stop signs, speed signs and that stuff on private property, you have to enter into a contract, an agreement with that entity in order to enforce it.
And when we try?
Now, they hire us privates for security.
And so, so, and I, I know this is gonna muddy the waters, so there's, there's a, there's a robbery at Trine football game. Trine, that's criminal. Oh, that's okay. But the speed limit, twenty-five, Trine can set that at what they want and enforce it. How, that's what I'm curious about.
The how is no longer a problem once we.
I, I don't think it's enforceable.
No, I understand.
I don't, I don't think any speed limit's enforceable, I'm a little worried about that.
So, what, what's the road that goes? I can't drive every day. Do you think it goes from twenty to, to Summit?
Summit.
That is Summit.
It, it's showing one that goes all the way down.
So, so, so how far down Summit City out now?
We own all of Summit.
So, there's that stop sign, there's a dorm being built right to the left side of Summit and Thunder. So, that stop sign is still us?
Yes.
Okay, which, you're not gonna enforce me, it's just, it doesn't say, okay. Go fast, go fast.
Does that bother you that there's no speed limit there at that point, Ken?
It's definitely a concern, but, uh, it's, once you vacate a street, we've vacated before, and it is what it is, so.
Trine concerned about it?
Yeah, that's something I can bring up with Trine about speed limits, I would, um, I don't know what their intention is in terms of setting it, I would presume that they would have.
I'm a lawyer, I don't think you can set it.
Have you?
I, I mean, as a private, I mean, when I went to school, there were speed limits on the property and private roads, I mean, they have to enforce it, but, you know, it's something that I can talk to Trine about to see if that is something they're willing to do, um, and if to engage in a contract, or I don't, I don't know what their intention is, or if they're going to try to enforce a speed limit, or what they're going to do at this point.
I mean, it's not that, you know, we're, it's ours right after the railroad tracks heading east, so, I mean, we're still.
Where it's a boulevard, there's no speed control, right, where the students cross the street?
Yeah, I mean, their campus safety is in charge of that, it's not our, yeah.
Speeding, and we get complaints down there, and now it's literally going to be telling them that, hey, you need to contact campus security, and it will help you with whatever issue you have.
I'm concerned with that.
I know it's not, of course, I don't know what it's like at nighttime, but I've always seen people go very slow, even straws.
Anybody else have any questions? John, why she's, uh, Jordan, why she's. Anybody else wanna make a comment about the, the comment before we close the public part of the meeting?
I wanna ask just one thing, how many, um, vacations have been done in the past with Trine? This is not new.
No, no, no.
That's new to me, but.
Uh, some streets have actually been removed, some of the streets that we, that we gave them over the years have, have been removed, where the ice arena, that there were several streets that ran through there that we vacated, um, the Kenny Street that used to go all the way down to Thunder, uh, the, the.
University Avenue has been, we've vacated several public right of ways, we've vacated a lot of lots out of Platts, or partial Platt vacations, but we've.
University, part of Gale Street have been vacated, a, a number of them, some are still streets and some aren't.
And that's the type of traffic. I'm not hearing history other than what Randy's bringing up with Ken, that it's any issues really, it's stuff you're gonna live with anyhow.
I, I know that, I know that one of the times they were cleaning sewers, and there's the bridge that goes across to, to the football field. They couldn't get underneath it, they had to go around and go back out because, I don't know how, like, far, but the bridges, that, that little bridge is already there, so. It is what it is.
Fill me in, why, why are we doing this?
Um, so we have committed to do this several times with Trine University. Uh, this was back in two thousand sixteen in MOU, and we just did not do Thunder at that time, so.
The last one, I think.
Two thousand sixteen.
This Thunder Drive is the last one of the memorandum of.
Is it, okay, so we just haven't.
Typically, we have pledged the value of the land as, as matching grant dollars. The city gives the credit for so many dollars of matching grant money that they receive, so it shows community support for what they're doing, has the street, the right of way has value to it, and we, and I think extra Thunder, we've pledged twice.
Uh, this is, yes, I think this is the second.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we've promised it twice, and, and they've never come back and said, would you please move forward in doing this? Other streets they have, we, the ones around the ice arena, we've, we've pledged the value of those to get matching dollars. They're gonna build the ice arena.
And actually, they thought we had already done this, so then with this MOU, they thought that we had done it, so with the last.
I'm starting to understand why they do it. They, they.
Trine University did, so with the last development, I said, no, it's not been vacated yet, they produced this MOU. So, the reason is, as they continue to grow, they develop, they were asking for the street, and we didn't really have any reason to keep it at this point.
But it's a high traffic.
It's, it's, especially at football games and basketball games, I, I come down there all the time, and it seems to me that if, if we just vacate it and there's no control, we're, we're opening up a can of worms.
It's up to Trine to control it.
There's, there's no enforcement power for Trine, there's no Trine police, it's not like Indiana University that has a statutory police department that's created, or Purdue University, those don't exist by statute. There's nothing they can do other than say, hey, don't do that, you know, the, the old man, hey, slow down, stay out of my grass, that, that kind of stuff. There, there's no enforcement power. And, and it's a, it's a high traffic area, and if it's a reason because they wanna build in that, and they're gonna build something across there, I guess I understand that, but I don't understand.
They can't overcross it, because we have utilities, they can build up to it, though they don't have to meet setback departments. That is an advantage for them. The advantage for us is we no longer have to maintain it, we don't have to plow it, we don't have to pave it, we don't have to.
Control.
Yeah, and it's, the sidewalks are theirs, the street's theirs, if the street needs repaving, they've got to.
Not that, but I'm worried about the safety.
I think we could ask, um, if you would like, we can place a call to Stu Hamblin or Cisco, um, at the university and kind of gauge what their, um.
But I, I don't.
What they do, just for information purposes, just so you know.
I don't think there's anything they can do.
I mean, I don't know.
And I said, I sat on a bench for twenty-five years, and I never had one complaint that I can recall of somebody driving too fast on private property. There's nobody that sued anybody, no complaint, it does, do you agree with me, that doesn't exist, does it?
I don't know, I have not been on the bench, so I don't know.
No, whether you're a bitch or not, you went to law school, I'm assuming.
I did, but I mean, it's.
Doesn't that happen, though?
I mean.
Doesn't that happen?
Anybody else wanna speak publicly before we close the public hearing?
Yeah. Maybe to help with your concern, so I've looked at this.
Chris, could you take the podium?
Yeah.
Speak on the public hearing, could you take the podium, please?
Uh, Chris Humbert, uh, six eighty Edredline here in Angola, um, I've looked at this up at Clear Lake because I've asked about speed limits and stuff with the, uh, roads around the lake, so on public maintained roads, you cannot put speed bumps in, however, on a private maintained road like that, on Trine, you would be able to possibly put a, or they would be able to possibly put a speed bump in on Thunder Drive, so that way that would help with your speeding of vehicles and things like that to make a safe room. But that would obviously be up to Trine to install those, and also make them, when they install those, make it so vehicles can still drive over on fire trucks, ambulances, squad cars, things of that nature, but it would keep the traffic slower with those speed bumps in there. That could be an option for you, or for them, so.
Yeah, I know about speed bumps, I was in California going over them a week ago, but that, I still doesn't, doesn't.
Anybody else wanna speak on the public hearing? If not, we'll go ahead and close the public portion.
I'm still curious, why, why are we doing it, I, I'm just, so they can have it, are, are there plans, is there something?
It does help with their, um, with their development, as the mayor said, they do not have to follow our setbacks to right of way like they do now, so they are planning an expansion to the training facility right now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that was at, went through development plan approval, and part of that was it would have required several variances, and they just said, well, we own that. We said, no, you don't yet, but you're right, we have pledged it a couple of times, are you asking to take it now, and they said, yes.
So that would just basically say that the need for getting those variances would be moot?
Yes. Yes.
Let's go ahead and.
So that's how it came up.
We'll, uh, we'll introduce it by title, ordinance number seventeen seventy-eight, twenty twenty-five, and ordinance vacating Thunder, Thunder Drive for first reading.
I'm moved to approve.
Second.
A motion second, not now, we have a discussion.
Do I go, you ask them about? Speed bumps? Well, I, I think there's more concerns than just speeding, that, there's a stop sign at, at the railroad track that we have an ordinance for. Does that become invalid? There's, there's lots of questions, I'm just thinking, thinking about these things instantly here.
I can't, that, that, that's an interesting question.
I think it's, I don't think it's valid any longer.
That, that, there is an ordinance for that stop sign that was placed at the railroad's request.
Is, um, is the vacation west of the railroad tracks, Rita? Doesn't vacate anything east of the railroad tracks, does it?
I, I think they have the railroad tracks.
You know?
It's just west of the.
Yeah, I think we stopped just west.
Stop sign leading up to that, if you are westbound, would be a valid stop sign to the city that is. So, no. No, we don't control all of you.
Yeah, this is, this is.
This is just something off the top of my head, there's, there's gonna be other concerns that.
Is the railroad crossing ours or theirs?
Sorry, um, that belongs to the railroad.
Well, yes, I know, but do, do, do they, which side of the, do they take over, on the west side or the east side?
Um, I think it goes.
Should be to the west side.
I think, I believe it's the west right of way line for the Indiana Northeast.
Okay.
Yes, as I'm looking right here, yeah.
That would mean the railroad crossing would still be within the city.
Yes.
And the railroad has.
Then they have.
Has their right of way over top, yes.
And the stop signs were put there at the railroad's request.
I'm unsure that the university would have no intention of removing them, but I have no idea, it's not something we've questioned that.
They wouldn't know what they have.
They'd be nothing, they'd be nothing.
No, I.
Previous councils have pledged this already, no, is that correct?
Actually, previous administrations have pledged.
This, 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 so it was done right. How about if we use, this is gonna take three, three readings, and, and, that's, that's a month.
And, and the.
So that give you guys?
The easement agreement will come back here too.
And so then we have the ability to take a look a little more in detail, if there's some issues, or in about some issues, we can hopefully get this worked out between the city, I, I would think that safety people, Trine, you give Trine the ability to respond to it, I mean, we're asking questions that maybe they wanna help fix, I, I, they, they clearly want the road, and so they wanna make sure it's safe, I can't imagine they just make it a free for all. Well, let's, let's, I think it should prove, I should simply, then, then have the next two readings to clean this up. Did I accept all of them, too? It makes up my thoughts.
Do you have any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, review and determine if Vestal Manufacturing, Vestal Manufacturing Corp., Vestal LLC is or is not in substantial compliance with the statement of benefits for, and I assume it's okay with you, we do all four at the same time, real estate improvement located at seven forty-nine Growth Parkway, Resolution twenty seventeen, seven twelve for ten years, personal property located at two nine 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 North Wayne Street, Resolution number twenty seventeen, seven twelve for ten years, real estate improvements located at two nine 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 North Wayne Street, Resolution number twenty twenty-one, eight oh two for ten years, and personal property located at two nine 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 North Wayne Street, Resolution number twenty, twenty-one, eight oh two for five years, Isaac?
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Yes. Stay up. Um, you're the last four for the city of Angola this year, and I were talking about it. So it's always a pleasure coming before you, uh, and, and speak to you about these tax amendments, these CF one forms, kinda give you an annual, uh, review of, of each of the organizations we grant these incentives to. Uh, today I brought Ken Schneider with me today, uh, to speaker this evening, uh, for all the hard questions like I normally tell you, so please take it with his while tonight, um, I think you're maybe stopping him from getting dinner, so make, make sure it stays a little bit longer. Uh, but on this abatement, looking at, uh, twenty, excuse me, twenty seventeen, seven twelve, I did take a look at that. Uh, this was one of the, uh, first ones that I actually got to dive into, uh, way back in twenty seventeen. Uh, it was an expansion of some real estate, also tied to some personal property, uh, both were ten years. Uh, the expansion included a hundred jobs, they have the full duration of the ten year abatement to reach that number, they are at twenty-one, but I would suggest you take a look at the salaries, they are well above what they projected back in twenty seventeen that those average salaries would be. We've seen that a lot with actually a lot of our companies, uh, which is a positive, a positive sign for us. Um, so again, my recommendation, at least on, uh, twenty seventeen, seven twelve, real, uh, estate was to, uh, mark and compliance. Same applied for the personal property side of that abatement, uh, as well. The final two, uh, uh, again are very similar, one is for real estate and one is for personal property. This was done in twenty twenty-one for press break, a steel folder, and then an additional twenty thousand square foot, uh, building space to house these items. Uh, in this one, you're looking at, uh, progress, uh, of thirteen employees based on the twenty reported. Uh, and again, we're also taking a look at the average salaries being well above what they anticipated for those positions. So, I present to you four recommendations tonight for approval.
Ken, anything you'd like to, uh, to add?
Um, just speaking on behalf of the company, just, it's, it's great, it's an honor to be here, so I just wanted to say thank you for that, and, uh, we are aligned with the community, aligned with trying to bring back or manufacture more goods here. Vestal Manufacturing and these amendments, always do that with our expansions and our initiatives and being able to hire people, so. Yeah, so just, that's a very short and sweet statement, but, uh, appreciate that, and, uh, we're looking forward to continuing, uh, for growth here in Angola.
How many employees now?
So, as of, uh, the end of last year, twelve thirty-one, twenty-four, we're up to four hundred and forty-six employees. And right before pandemic, we were at four fifty, so at the end of last year, we were clawing back to that, but really, it's, it's, uh, it's been retention, it's really been a big problem as well.
I believe it is.
Yeah, and that's why, it's Isaac's point, that's why salaries are up, because we've had to pay people more to. That's how much this environment network.
I, I think you used to have a matrix that you would talk about job and return of investment, and.
Have you ever made adjustments on that based on your comment regarding increase in salaries? I made adjustments every year to it. Because that, that, that really is, uh, so. So what goes on in that formula, uh, we take a look at, um, the average wage for every NAIC code that qualifies for tax payments state of Indiana, which is all manufacturing based, that gets uploaded, new tax rates get uploaded. Um, there's a couple other things that impact how the average wage on indirect salaries, take a look at. Uh, we can adjust for some of those, we used to start ten years ago, believe it or not, at fifteen bucks an hour on those indirect wages, we're now looking at eighteen. Uh, in twenty twenty-six, it's recommended that we adjust it to nineteen. Is that, is that adjusted based on rate of inflation, or just increases in, in overall? It's adjusted looking at two different things, rate of inflation's included, but what's more important is what we are seeing average wage based on what's reported to the IRS. So, I think that kind of trumps. Directing some stuff. So, so those are things that kinda go on in the background of that Excel file, that when I present a new tax abatement to you, that's taken into consideration, into consideration, you take a look at that last page, it talks about return on investment, it also talks about directing indirect, uh, job wages, that's where all that comes in. No, perfect question.
entertain motion.
Will be Vestal's substantial plans for all for the taxing.
Motion seconded discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ken, thanks for showing up this evening, and thank Vestal to their management and owners, we appreciate their great partnership we've had for many, many years in this community, they supply a lot of jobs, great employer. Can't say enough good about, uh, Vestal, it's, uh, it's great to have you call Angola your, your home, we appreciate you. Can't say enough good about Vestal. It's, it's great to have you call Angola your, your home. We appreciate you meeting here. And we've, we've partnered on a number of different things and the last one was the NIPCO gas issue that we were able to, put a deal together that made sense for everybody. So we appreciate everything Vestal has done.
Thank you.
Uh, report, clerk treasurer.
Welcome in.
Yep, no report, Mr. Manta. Mitch, now's your chance. Thirty minutes, it's all yours until eight o'clock. Nothing?
Nothing to add.
Yeah.
No reports, sir.
Chief.
No report.
Nothing. Uh, chief.
Nothing, sir.
I think we've got everybody. Is there any other, oh, 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 request approval allowance counts payable voucher seventy four thousand twenty eight, three seventy four thousand two hundred thirty seven, for one nine hundred thirty three thousand nine hundred eighty nine dollars and seven cents.
I move to.
Who's paid the bills? Okay. Motion second. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any other new business?
Yes, I wanna, I would like to have everybody involved just a couple of minutes. Typically, let me frame this up. Typically, we have the mayor who leads initiatives down. You have your newsletters, you have emails, and then those things are such things as reminding people in the winter that get your sidewalks plowed. Well, we're in the spring of the year now and I have people in my district that have never mowed their yard.
I just didn't mind today.
I'm not talking. So, so I, I also had numerous people coming to me, asking me a very obvious question, what can I do about it? And I tell them, there's a process that actually exists to this. It's called the removal of the weeds and ranked vegetation. When I found this on my website, pulled it down. So I look at the people who own properties in three categories. One of them is that they're very, they have a lot of pride. They have pride whether it's themselves, in the community, or both. There's another group that doesn't give a rats anything about the yard. And there are a lot of new homeowners in our neighborhood that I never even see. They live inside or they work nights and all that type of stuff. They don't come out, they don't mow, they don't do anything. I've had people complain to me about calling me and emailing me now that I have this role. And I sent them in the right direction, but they're not happy. So then the other one is the people who don't know. So I have those three groups. They know, they don't care, or they don't, they just aren't educated. So we have new people all the time coming into homeownership. And in that route, I like the communication path that you've always had developed. I would, I'm asking that the mayor, and maybe you've already done this, but you put out there, why this, this exists? Because it exists because, and and if, if nobody's ever read it, you probably all have, but you know, six inches is the max that you're supposed to get. That's really low. Most communities are eight or above even. So we really have pretty stringent criteria. Why? Because we want our area, our city to look good. I want our city to look good. So I feel like there's a new norm being established in this world today by people who are getting into homes they don't know how to take care of. There's a responsibility that comes along with owning a home. Pay your taxes, mow your yard, clean off your sidewalks. So that's enough of my rant. And what I, garbage, and I get the, I get the complaints about neighbors having garbage burning, you know, I send them to Ken's group. But what I, the difference is, I know the mayor will put something in his communications to the populace of Angola. But how about it's not just the mayor saying it? How about it's the council and the mayor saying it? Because I'm gonna lead an initiative in District D to get this stuff cleaned up. I, I'm done, I'm done with it because I've, people are not helping themselves and it's not okay with me. That's why these exist.
We do have an enforcement, code enforcement officer. We do post when somebody is, gets obnoxiously long and they do have a limited period of time to rectify it or we will rectify it and charge them.
And this one is very different than the winter one that I mentioned because the winter one, if somebody hasn't moved their vehicles or done it, the police already know it. This one is resident driven, to your, to your point. I've, I've called the police department and followed the process and everything, and it works. But I don't think we have, our constituents all know that they have a process. And the other one is the people who own these properties don't understand there's responsibility that comes along with it. Now, that won't fix it all, but that's two of the three categories getting touched and it helps make the one category that really cares happier.
Ken, would you like to?
We have an ordinance officer that drives the city starting tomorrow. He hasn't been in yet this year. Things have just, you know, our temperatures have been sort of odd this year. They have definitely been a little bit warmer, so we've got a lot of grass growing fast. So we have an ordinance officer that will start driving the city tomorrow. He usually comes in two to three days a week. He spends about four hours a day and drives the city looking for them. We do have a process. It isn't just a, the weeds are there, you have to get it mowed otherwise, you know. You have to document, you have to send them notification. They have to disregard the notification, then we.
Yeah, it's timely.
It's timeless. So we do have a current process. It isn't just the residents. It is something that the mayor and the mayor's office has felt strong about, so they do give us a little bit of leeway there. And we try as best as we can to keep up on it. But there are a lot of residents within the city of Angola.
Well, and right now, giving all the residents a bye is, it is springtime and things are popping like crazy. And most people, if you, if you take care of your yard, you're mowing twice a week, you know. I understand all that. It's the ones that don't do anything that drive me crazy.
A few of those that.
He's not mowing.
We, we have some that are on a regular route with our code enforcement. He, he doesn't have to go out and look. He just knows he's gotta go out and post it because it, it, month over month over month, it's the same. It's the same, and we have some abandoned lots that we have to.
Landlords.
Yeah, some bad landlords. See, I knew he was gonna go out. I knew he was gonna go on patrol tomorrow, so I posted my yard.
One of the things we also talked about at the time was we had some people, they just waited till the city mowed it for him, and it was cheaper than hiring somebody.
We're not charging enough.
That's, I said, just, just jack it up, make it.
Absolutely.
It has changed.
It is no longer cheap to have a city mow your yard. Good. We don't mow it. We hire a company to come in and it is not a nice bill.
We, we had a lot, one time the, the bank ended up owing it. This is a number of years back and we ended up posting it and got off to, onto the people that had to lean on it. And we sent them a bill for five thousand dollars. And they pretty got, pretty upset about the bill for five thousand dollars and we said, well, why don't you just give it to us and we'll just forgive the bill? And they did and we, then we turned and gave it to Habitat. So there was a Habitat house on it, but we did it as a ploy to convince them to donate it to us.
Well, I don't want you to be standing there alone asking for compliance. That's where I'm coming from.
I'm with you. I've gotten complaints already this year and it's like you said, we've had, Ken said, we've had a wet year and warm and the grass is growing. But I've had people in the neighborhood about a house across the way from me and I, I wasn't concerned, but the neighbors were.
Yeah. And just to your point of the ones that maybe are new here, like moved here and might not know what that looks like, Brian? Who, who sets up what the messages are in the utility bills? I know usually there's a little.
My office.
Your office. I don't know if that's something in the springtime. You just haven't known of this because if they're a new resident, they're most likely getting a utility bill.
And what I'm hoping is that our mayor can put a positive spin on it, that this is actually a good thing to have. If you don't have this, then, then, you know, things can go anywhere they want and that's not Angola. And Mr. Mayor, if there are repeat violators, we don't need to continually, oh, I, I could take that to court on nuisance and get the judge to order.
Anything else?
That's it.
Any other, any other new business? All right. Uh, Wednesday, come on down, join us for lunch at the Angola Commons Park. We'll have to see y'all down there. And the next meeting is Monday, May nineteenth, twenty twenty five.
Congratulations.